City of Walton Council Work Session. We have two items on the agenda tonight, first one being a Climate Action Plan Scoping.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Fox, Public Works Director, and I am going to hand this over to Nick Westendorf and Ariel Kane to talk through the work that they've done. So take it away, Nick.
Awesome. Thank you. Mayor, Councillors, good to see you all this evening. Ariel Kane, our intern from PSU and myself have been working on a framework for the Climate Action Plan RFP. And when I say we, I mean mostly Ariel. So I will be kicking the presentation over their way. I just wanted to give a shout out to Ariel for all the hard work on this up to this point. Been integral in helping progress this project. And unfortunately, we'll be leaving the city for their full-time gig after this week. So I just wanted to say thank you before we get started. And with that, I will pass it over to Ariel for the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Nick, and thank you for the kind introduction. It's definitely been a joy to work on this project. Tonight, we are hoping to get some feedback on the proposed goal, guiding principles, and timeline for the Climate Action Plan. Just a quick overview of what we'll talk about. And just go through the City Council discussions from last December, then a project update, including some goals and principles and a phased approach that we're recommending, as well as next steps and some discussion. So last time I presented to you, or most of you, we were asking for guidance on what components and targets to pursue within the Climate Action Plan. We discussed three different options for plan type inclusion, and council enthusiastically supported a sort of all of the above option, which included a greenhouse gas inventory, the community plan, and an operational or internal plan. We also discussed the value of pursuing all target areas. And with that decision in mind, we've continued to develop the scope of work in the beginnings of a request for proposal. Much like the research previously presented, we looked far and near for examples of successful and comparable plans that reflected the desires of the community and councils. So we drew primarily from the City of Ashland's Plan RFP and Scope of Work, as well as Clackamas County. In my previous presentation, you may remember that I had done outreach to these two entities, and they provided a great deal of feedback. Ashland is similarly sized and also well underway in their Climate Action Plan. While Clackamas County is just a few steps ahead, so ahead in their planning process in comparison to Walton. Their engagement has just started this year for their plan. Additionally, given that City of Walton has a portion of the city within the county, it's a great point of reference and place to draw inspiration from. However, these two plans, Clackamas County and City of Ashland, followed their greenhouse gas inventory. So we looked elsewhere for examples of scopes of work that involve this additional component. So we looked at RFPs and analyses from across the country, including California, Maine, Florida, and California, to develop a scope of work that includes that greenhouse gas inventory component. So using those resources and building on our understanding of council priorities and decisions, we developed this higher level goal to guide development of the plan. And so to create a climate action plan that is community-centric, action-oriented, which establishes a clear baseline for action to adapt to and mitigate the impacts of climate change in the City of Walton. And so this overarching goal is hopefully going to drive our work. And with the goal in mind, we'll recommend the following components and deliverables. So in addition to developing this goal, we've also further expanded the scope from the December meeting. So we added this explicit goal of having an engagement plan as a part of the request for proposals. This is because engagement is already an implicit part of the planning process, but highlighting it will allow us to develop plans the community is involved in making and consider a wide perspective from across the whole community. We hope that our consultants will work with, or your consultants, will work with staff to develop a variety of strategies and tools for engaging the community with planning and implementation. Some examples that we've listed here are project webpages, advisory groups, surveys, open houses, et cetera. So in addition to the overarching goal, we hope to have some guiding principles to accompany this community engagement at the forefront of our minds. So we drew inspiration from Clackamas County in explicitly detailing these principles for the development of the plan. So in brief, equity benefits and partnership. Equity, the plan should detail impact on different communities and groups within Walton, and how implementation will incorporate equity and empowerment considerations, and will also ensure that we make a plan that works for everyone after hearing from everyone. As well, benefits, the plan should reinforce benefits of climate action and focus on how the plan will improve community will be, as well as discuss the cost of inaction and action to the City of Walton or the community. And then lastly, the Community Climate Action Plan will be the most successful if we're engaged with regional partners or local organizations. So the plan should incorporate actions that the partners can take and how the community can leverage these partnerships to have stronger climate action. All right. And so with this, as I mentioned, we're recommending taking a phased approach. And by phased approach, it's quite simple, just two phases. The first phase is essentially the three components we had talked about previously, a greenhouse gas inventory that will really set that baseline that's needed to begin planning. And then engagement will be key throughout the whole plan. So Community Climate Action Plan, as well as the Operational Plan. And then the largest deliverable is the Community Climate Action Plan that'll focus on community infrastructure development and actions to reduce community-based emissions. And so this slide may look familiar to some of you. This is just to highlight that the Community Climate Action Plan will include all of the targets we already discussed at the last December meeting. But we'll also be asking the consultants to consider these different types of actions and strategies still, as some mitigation and adaptation, and then where possible, sequestration. And so those three components are really the largest part of Phase One. And then Phase Two would just be this Operational Plan. So separating into two phases has a couple of different benefits. So by doing the engagement and community plan first, we'll be able to really let the community and what they want drive the process and guide what is involved, as well using staff time and energy efficiently, allowing these phases to dovetail into one another instead of piling on, will account for staff capacity. So this Operational Plan will fall in line and be informed by the engagement in greenhouse gas analysis that happens in the first phase, but also the staff involvement in planning and implementation. This is fairly standard across the planning processes I reviewed for you all previously, and it reflects other trends to scaffold the climate action planning process towards implementation. And then the last thing I have for you is just to illustrate what we mean by these phases and what it might look and feel like over the coming years. This shape might seem familiar. It's based on the Walton moving forward one we've already seen. It's just a draft based on what we've heard from other communities. Once these initial phases are complete, the staff scoping and researching, as well as the request for proposals being posted, a consultant will be selected. And then the consultant will have a better idea of what this timeline is going to look like for them. And it will likely change in terms of when, but it will likely begin here with a greenhouse gas analysis to set that baseline and then move into the community planning and engagement. Other communities expressed that from start to finish, they had hoped that the planning process would take 12 months, but on average, it actually took 18 months. So this sort of longer line, longer timelines reflects that. And then while the community plan here is being adopted and being approved, you could probably start doing the scoping for the Operational Plan and then move into Community Action Plan before the Community Action Plan implementation, before the Operational Plan is ready to be adopted. But likely, once the Operational Plan scoping gets underway, it'll be adopted much faster than that 18 months that the Climate Action Plan has, because it builds on that previous engagement baseline. This was a brief presentation, so we'd really like your feedback on all of what we just presented. Specifically, we'd like to hear if this feels like the right path forward, if we've missed something, and if there are any general comments or questions.
Thanks, Ariel. Can you go ahead and close this so we can see everybody, please? Thanks. Questions for Ariel or Nicholas? But since Ariel leaving us soon, we'll ask her all the questions. Council Pratt.
Thank you for the presentation, Ariel. This is just wonderful. I had a question on, like, under sequestration, you had an example of increasing our tree canopy, but I'm wondering where the process or that would be included in the process to identify things like our current carbon sinks and our current, like, streams and wet ones, if that would be part of the process and where.
Ariel.
If you have an answer, Nick, that's fine, too.
You're welcome to answer, if you...
I don't have a clear answer, so...
So I also do not know for certain, but I would imagine, and we could get back on this, that part of the greenhouse gas inventory process would look at our current situation as a city and take into account some of those things. And we could definitely explore that further as we prepare the RFP. But that, in my mind, is where that fits. Like, part of our current status, our baseline, is not only our emissions we're generating, but what good things have we done to this point, or what opportunities do we already have?
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. It looked like you were just saying, what are we doing badly? So that's very helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Pretty quiet. Wow. I guess I'll ask one. So Ariel, so you have where the greenhouse gas analysis begins. So are you envisioning all these analyses end about the same time? Or are they one after each other?
I think that they will probably, it'll depend on the consultant and probably how they decide to do the analysis. But I imagine that getting the engagement rolling and starting to get information from the community about what they want to see will probably start before the greenhouse gas analysis is ended. And then that information will end up coming into the process to help make decisions about final actions.
Okay. And then, based on your research, and you might not got into this. So when a consultant is selected, do they usually propose a 12-month or an 18-month process? As you said, usually they say they'll take 12, but end up taking 18.
That's a great question. I don't know that I, I don't know that I saw a proposed timeline that explicitly said 12 to 18 months that included this greenhouse gas analysis portion. That sort of extends the process, I think. But yeah, it was more anecdotal what city staff were actually experiencing rather than what I did before.
Other questions? Council Pratt.
Well, I just want to say thank you, actually, for the work. And I don't know where you're going next, but congratulations to you and to them, whoever they are. And I am very excited, just for, you know, not everyone was here for the last decision, but understanding what our baseline is so that we can show measurable outcomes and help with grants and funding is, to me, a really good foundation. And including that in the options in the beginning and then in the planning, to me, it seems like a very good model that our city is setting. And, and, you know, when I practice as a practitioner, I can't say that something's going to work unless I have something to measure it. And that helps, you know, scientific thinking and making sure that we're delivering and what we say we're going to deliver and being able to tweak things that are not working so that they can work better. And we all know how important it is with all the climate issues that we're facing in our area. So I really appreciate the work. It's really timely and important. And the thoroughness has been really, I think, powerful. Thank you.
Other questions? Wow. You must have really nailed it, Ariel. Wow.
Nice job, Ariel.
You got people quiet here. That's pretty rare. So what do you need from us next, Ariel and Nick?
I think we've got it. If this sounds like the right path, we'll continue to prepare the RFP and get ready to get it advertised and get a consultant on board to help us begin planning.
All right. So is everybody comfortable with the staff moving ahead with the RFP process? Heads are non, thumbs are up? All right.
I like it.
Thank you both, and best wishes to you, Ariel, and your future career.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So moving on to item number two, which is Urban Renewal District Two Study Area Visioning. I see, there's Jonathan, you moved.
We have everybody here? Jonathan?
We do. Nick, Nick is coming up.
A little ahead of schedule, so...
Nick, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right.
So Jonathan, do you want to start the presentation, the screen sharing now?
I think you can do that down at the bottom, screen share. Yeah. So good evening, Mayor, members of council. On behalf of Nick and I, we're here tonight to talk about the community vision for the Urban Renewal Study Area Two, which is in the northern part of the city. And so tonight, I'm going to briefly touch on the background. And so we're going to give Nick pretty much the entire time to walk through some of the options that will help this commission, the City Council, kind of identify how they want to move forward with the overall visioning process and come back at a later date with the scope of work. So real quick, we'll touch the background, and then Nick will do the possible approaches for visioning, and then he'll take questions, and then we can have a discussion. So the question tonight for City Council is, what are, what approaches would the City Council like to consider to establish a vision for Study Area Two? In the staff report, we laid out a number of options, so he'll go over those in depth. And then, real quick, everyone, I think, is pretty familiar with this graph, but this has been an ongoing process since 2018, when we kicked off Walton in 2040. And so last year, we adopted the feasibility studies for both District One and District Two, those study areas. And then right now, we are in Phase Four of District Two Visioning. So we're here today. And then what we do tonight will help plan for future work, not only the remainder of the year, but moving forward into 2022 and on. So just a brief recap, this is the proposed Study Area Two. It includes the antler and then all the way down to the town commons, behind Dutch Brothers, and over near the hospital. So most recently, we had some small group conversations with City Council. And then also, we've had and heard these discussions over the last couple of years. And so what we've heard for the desired outcomes in Study Area Two are the following. So additional housing options, improving transportation systems, preparing for increased density in identified areas, address long-term vacant buildings, focus and try to provide opportunities for mixed-use development, which is commercial and residential hybrids. One thing we also heard is the natural environment promotion. So focus somewhat on the river, somewhat on green space, just to kind of promote those things in which we have assets for. Property acquisition, which could be used to help further the development in Study Area Two, and then also establish a common identity or kind of promote our own personality. And so now, that's pretty quick, but I'm going to give it over to Nick, and he's going to take the rest.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me here tonight, virtually. I'm hoping that the bulk of this presentation is not new material for you. So I'm not purporting to present some innovative new way to do a vision for an area like this, but instead, I'm trying to identify the long laundry list of potential tasks that are often included when other communities do a visioning project for this sort of an area. This visioning conversation is happening in the context of urban renewal. That's because the community and the affected taxing districts seldom are enthusiastic and excited about adopting urban renewal for the sake of that tool, but instead get excited about what urban renewal can do for a community, how tax increment financing can be used to fund the projects and programs that implement a vision that the community is excited about. And it's that vision that makes the other taxing districts think that tax increment financing is a worthwhile effort. Their foregone revenue goes to building something that they can see that the community is excited about and has a positive impact. When it comes to this visioning work, there is no one right way to achieve the vision. I've been doing this work for 15 years now, and I've worked with dozens of communities, maybe over 100 communities now, many across Oregon. Some of them, when it comes to an urban renewal plan, have not, have done none of this visioning work. They simply take what their City Council and staff know are high priority projects for an area, and they put those projects into the plan, and that's enough of a vision. I've worked in other communities where the visioning process has lasted several years. It's taken a whole host of consultants, including architects, economists, land use planners, et cetera. And the total bill to do that visioning work has added up to be $250,000 or more. So there is clearly a wide spectrum for what different communities view as the appropriate level of effort and the right bundle of tasks to get you to a community-supported vision. I assume that to Walton, once you've gone through this presentation and worked with staff to identify exactly what you're looking for here, we'll be somewhere between those two bookends. What the overall sort of purpose of tonight's meeting is, is the very first point that you'd be talking about for this visioning project. Based on the input that City Council provides tonight and further conversations with staff over the coming weeks, I would help staff put together a proposed scope of work that would go out in an RFP later on to select a consultant team to prepare that vision for you. I believe that we are on the schedule a month from now to be back in front of City Council and to present that draft scope of work. So you have another opportunity to say, did we get the right list of tasks here, the right level of effort based on your input this evening? Even at that point in time, once the scope of work has been prepared and the RFP is out there, when the city selects a consultant team, there'd be even more revisions to that scope of work, incorporating whatever great ideas that winning consultant team brings to the table in terms of how to come up with the best possible vision for this community for this point in time. Definitely an interesting time to be doing visioning work with COVID protocols hopefully coming to an end, and, you know, mask wearing still being the norm and all of that. Long story short, tonight is the first step towards establishing a vision for this area, but definitely not the last step. And there will be many more opportunities with council input before the city really embarks in earnest on this vision and certainly before the vision is complete and ready to be implemented through urban renewal and other processes. As for this slide itself, what is a vision? I think the second bullet point there is what folks typically think of. What do we want this area to be in the future? But oftentimes, when you're doing these public visioning projects, it's helpful to take a look at that last bullet point of how can we transform the area from what it is today, or from what it is, to what we want it to be. And if we are trying to figure out the specific steps to get us to the future, then it's really helpful to answer that very first question of how do we view the area now? So I kind of view all three pieces of that as the common questions that get answered in a visioning project like this. Defining what the area is today, defining what we want that area to be in the future, and identifying the steps to get us from now to the future. How, so how do we view the area now? There's a number of potential tasks that I've seen a lot of communities undertake in order to get that clear picture of what an area means to a community now. That includes plan review, SWOT analysis, strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, market studies, existing conditions analysis, and walking tours. And again, I don't think necessarily any of this will be new information. We're really just trying to get it all in one place so that City Council can see the overwhelming list of options and try and figure out which ones feel like the right approach for this community at this time. For each of these tasks, I'm going to run through them quickly. Identify the type of professionals that typically lead these tasks. So who you'd be looking for in terms of a consultant, the typical cost estimates for these tasks, and then a few additional comments on how useful I view these tasks for these types of projects. I will say that as I identify the types of professionals that typically lead this work, you will not see public finance consultant listed anywhere here. So I didn't come up with this list as a long list of services that I specifically am interested in providing. Though earlier in my career, when I was doing more land use planning and economic consulting, certainly there are tasks that I'm familiar with. And I've been involved in projects that have done every single one of the tasks that we will go through tonight. But this is, again, just based on my 15 years of doing these types of projects, working with the other great professionals that are out there to help cities come up with visions, and some of the tasks that I know are often done. So plan review, very straightforward. This is going through all the existing adopted plans that the city has that are relevant to an area, identifying the infrastructure and development patterns that are called for in those plans, and really documenting what the existing vision is, even if it wasn't called a vision. Those planning documents that say what types of densities are anticipated here, what infrastructure projects need to be built here. By default, those do establish a vision for an area, even if it's out of date or disjointed or unintentional. But documenting all of those plans and what's already called for in the area can be an important first step. When you see the cost estimates on every one of these slides, they are measured in the number of dollar signs that appear on the slide. This is my shorthand form here. Whenever you see $1 sign like on this slide, I'm saying this is an affordable task. This is something that typically a consultant should charge less than $10,000 for. For this task, in theory, much less than that. If you see $2 signs, that's a task that I think is going to probably cost you more than $10,000, hopefully less than 20. And if you see a project on here that's listed as $3 signs, that can get to be pretty expensive work, and for those sorts of tasks, I'd anticipate the consultants out there would be charging you more than $20,000 for those types of projects. So this is a planning task, pretty cost-effective, really just taking the lay of the land of your existing plan. Another one of these tasks for identifying what an area is like today is a SWOT analysis. Again, that stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats facing an area. This is a very well-established framework, not just done for public visioning exercises, but businesses and all sorts of entities looking at these analyses to figure out what they're doing well today and where they can capitalize and make improvements in the future. Again, this is typically done by planners, and again, this tends to be a pretty affordable task. Next is a market study. This is where we start to get into some more rigorous technical analysis. So the costs here can increase a little bit more, though this can also be done fairly affordably. I would say one of the things that drives the price on this is sometimes it gets into looking at the details of specific market segments. So not just looking at broad rental vacancy rates, rental rates in terms of dollars per square foot. But if you start looking at individual industries, their location quotients, cluster studies, you can take a really deep dive, because these days, there's an awful lot of data that's available to you out there. This provides a snapshot, again, of quantitative data on the market feasibility of different development types in an area. And it looks at that historical, in terms of historical trends and comparisons to the broader region. For this, rather than planners, you'd be looking at economists to lead this task for you. This can be extremely helpful. They can be worth their weight in gold if you're working with private developers and trying to get those developers to understand your community, get them interested in developing here, and proving to them that, yes, there is a market for them to build here. But at the same time, they have a very limited shelf life. So a developer five years from now is not going to pay much attention to what your market... So a developer five years from now is not going to pay much attention to what your market study said today. If you were to look back five or 10 years ago at market conditions in your community, they would look an awful lot different than they do today as well. So it can be very valuable, but also time-sensitive. Existing conditions analysis is another term that I'm sure you've heard. A common thing that jurisdictions could do at the beginning of a visioning project. This really just pulls together the information from those previous sorts of tasks. This is sort of an overarching umbrella document that would tie them together, including SWOT analysis, market studies, and plan reviews. This is again something that a planner would lead. And if you really want to document the conditions of an area and do it holistically, you'd probably fold all those things under this one umbrella term. And then last, another way, and this is kind of a different approach to really understand the conditions in an area, would be walking tours. My understanding is that city council, city officials, most of the citizens of Tewallatin should all be pretty familiar with this area. This is the core area of town. So walking tours might not be necessary for folks that already have a very solid understanding of the area. But again, some of these projects work to bring in outside forces, whether that's the consultants themselves, or I'd really like seeing private developers from the rest of the region brought in to see the area so they can kick the tires on it and understand what's going on here and understand the strengths and weaknesses of the community from a development perspective. And so these sort of walking tours can really help folks who aren't familiar with the area to see firsthand what the area is like. So those are the typical tasks that we might see to help identify what is the area like today. Then the next question about what do we want the area to be in the future? Here we have a longer list of potential tasks. And again, this is sort of the heart of a visioning project. So again, we'll quickly run through each of these. Open houses, I'm sure folks are very familiar with open houses. I will say that you get in what you get out of them. I have been involved in, I would say, maybe over 100 open houses in my career. Some of them have been big disappointments, very few people attending, very unexciting for the people that do attend. You know, a lot of effort put in and then not a lot of positive work coming out of it. I've also been on the opposite side where they have been huge home-run successes, where staff have come up with great ways to involve the public that do show up, great ways to market these events and make them fun and exciting, great ways to get big turnouts, especially with diverse members of the community, and having translation services available on hand. So if you do invest in these, you can have great positive outcomes, but that's certainly not guaranteed. But this tends to be sort of the old-school mentality, the old workhorse of how you involve the public and get input on a vision is by putting on a series of open houses, inviting the public to come in and getting feedback from everyone who does show up. An approach that I would describe as sort of an open house on steroids would be the design charrette. This is a term that architects and designers like to throw around a lot. It's sort of a multi-day-long open house process. And so they like to get multiple design professionals in the room all at the same time, keep those folks in the room for eight to 10 hours of a day, invite the public to come in and out as there's various elements of the community that are discussed, various elements of design that are discussed. And then these architects and designers in real time are drawing up plans for the community and potential development options here. And by the time this multi-day charrette is finished, they have design drawings and land use plans, illustrations to show the community what this development could look like. And it really tries to go from start to finish of a vision for a community all in a few days. Those few days can be quite expensive due to the way these things are set up and the labor rates of architects and designers that are involved. But it can be really exciting for the community, and it can result in a really cool product that people seem to gravitate towards at the end of that design charrette process. Surveys, another age-old approach. I would make a distinction between statistically significant surveys versus online community surveys. If you were going to put a new property tax on the ballot, you want to do a statistically significant survey. And so you want to make sure that you're not just getting responses from the same email list of folks who all happen to be particularly pro-tax or anti-tax. You want to get true random sampling of the community hitting key demographic groups. That can become very expensive, especially today where folks don't have landlines and aren't answering their phone for unknown numbers anymore. For this sort of visioning project, I don't think you'd be needing a statistically significant survey. I think you'd be looking for a more cost-effective approach, which is sort of an online community survey. And there you're just trying to get as many people to take that survey as possible without worrying if they're statistically significant or the exact right breakdown of demographic factors that you're looking for. For that, that can be a quick and efficient way to capture the public opinion, particularly when you have a very specific list of questions that you're interested in. There can be reasons why it's not an exact substitute for design charrette or an open house because if you really want an interactive conversation with folks or you have a host of questions that aren't so cut and dry, multiple choice answers. And particularly if you have visual questions where you'd like them to draw on a map and show us what they think should go where, surveys might not be able to do all of those things for you. Community events, this is sort of an open house roadshow. So rather than trying to invite the public and attract them to come to you for your specific event, instead you take that same material and go to them at farmer markets, at the county fair, whatever other events are going on in the community. You go there and set up a booth, and people drop by and participate that way. I've staffed a fair number of these events over the years, and I can say that the public tends to really respond well to them. They're in a good mood when they're at the farmer's market. They're happy to stop by and talk for a few minutes about the project, put a sticker on a big chart of where their top priorities are for investments in the community. You can get a large number of people this way and also reach people who wouldn't ordinarily take time out of their day to come to an open house event. Advisory committees, I'm sure everybody's familiar with these as well. This is one way of soliciting public feedback, but it is a select group of the public. It's not, you know, anyone who's interested in coming. There are just certain questions where you might not be able to tackle it in a one-hour open house event for folks that are coming in with no background on the issue. If you're really digging into property tax questions, and how is this going to affect, or how is this going to affect the local jurisdictions? And is it a good trade-off of the money? There could be so much education that needs to happen with the general public that it makes those questions not really appropriate necessarily to answer in an open house setting. And instead, if you had a select group of community members who are meeting on a regular basis, who are representing key interest groups, they can handle some of these more in-depth questions. Focus groups is another way to have group feedback. I would say this is sort of halfway in between an open house and an individual survey. So you are still getting group conversations going here like an open house, but it's far more structured, not a free-for-all environment. But you have questions that you've identified ahead of time. You have educational materials you've identified ahead of time, and you have designated facilitators at each table to make sure that you're asking these questions and capturing the feedback from the group. And these can either be randomly selected groups if you're trying to do something like a statistical significant survey, or it can be great for targeted audience where you know, for example, that you've had a hard time doing outreach to non-English speaking members of the community, and you want to make sure that you're using your translation services as effectively as possible. And so making sure that you invite a large number of those folks to one specific event, and you break them out into focus group tables where a facilitator that can speak the right languages at each of those tables, it can be a great way to capture that feedback relatively effectively and cost-efficiently. Educational materials isn't really a task. This is an end product, or even not even an end product, but a medium product to get you to an end. Just wanted to flag this because these sorts of materials can be very valuable when you're working with the public to come up with a vision. And it's also something that you don't want to overlook when you are putting out a scope of work because these materials do cost money. There's a reason why my products tend to be just text on slides here or boring Excel tables because that is the cheap way to do things, and that's what I offer. But if we wanted to go out and capture the hearts and attention of the community, they might not respond so well to walls of text and detailed tables. And so instead, we want to have something that pops, that's eye-catching, lots of graphics, might even do short videos that you put on YouTube or something like that, or on the city's Facebook page. And so for those kind of materials, they definitely have a cost, and you just want to make sure that you're using your dollars effectively. But this can be a great way to really capture the attention of your community. Guiding principles, again, this is sort of an end product that you would have. So based on the outreach work that you do on some of those other tasks that we suggested earlier, you could then document what the guiding principles are, the shortlist of components that will make up this vision. And depending on how detailed you are, rather than you could call these your goals or your objectives, rather than guiding principles. But at some point from your vision, you want to articulate what are the key components that make this vision special. Illustrated design concepts. So this is another great way of visualizing what the community wants to see in this area. Lots of the other things we've talked about might get into words and planning language, lines on maps or something like that. But really, folks respond well to visual pictures of what might develop in this area. And so that's where we get into these illustrated design concepts. This is a task that's typically led by architects, and because it's architects that are doing design work, it can be fairly expensive. Depends on whether you're looking at just one particular site or whether you've got 10 sites all across your community, and you want to illustrate different options of what could develop on each of those. So the level of effort here really scales up and down, and there's a lot of different ways to do that. One, looking at just photos of other real buildings in other communities. Another, using software programs to do 3D block massings. And then you can actually have true architectural designs and illustrations of hypothetical new buildings that are drawn in real sites in your community. And speaking of opportunity sites throughout your community, you can also do an opportunity site analysis. This is kind of where economists, architects, and planners all come together. So even though we're planning for a broad area, it can help folks if we hone in on one specific key site in that area to see how a vision might play out there. And so identifying that specific site that everyone in the community is familiar with, and then documenting what are some of the different concepts that we could envision developing there, illustrating those visions, running the financial numbers to see how they pencil out and whether there's a financial gap that would need to be solved for, and then talking about what it would take to achieve that vision on the site. This can be particularly helpful, again, depending on the number of sites you identify and the level of financial analysis and the level of design work that you want to do on each one. It's sort of a middle-of-the-road task in terms of budget requirements. And now we make it to our last batch of questions. How can we transform the area from what it is today to what we want it to be in the vision? And so there's another seven tasks that we identify here. An action and implementation plan, a concept plan, urban renewal plan, land use and transportation plan, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning code amendment, and other administrative actions. So across the board, generally what we're looking at here is, once you know what your vision is, you may also at this point in time want to amend or adopt new plans that help spell out how you're going to implement and achieve that vision. Action and implementation plan is often an internal-facing document. It's something for city staff. You might have kind of an overwhelming list of things that need to happen in order to achieve this vision. And this is a way of identifying who's responsible for implementing each of those, what the timeline is for getting that done, and the various steps that you'll take, the interim steps to make that happen. On a concept plan, this is really sort of an umbrella term that would roll in a lot of the different tasks we discussed previously. We see this very often when it's a newly, a new urbanized area that's just brought into an urban growth boundary, and it's sort of a clean slate. Often you'll see concept plans done there, but it includes a plan review, public outreach, market studies, guiding principles, design concepts, land use and transportation plans, kind of all rolled into one package where you put a bow on it and call it a concept plan. Urban renewal plan is certainly something that we expect to come out of this because that's the framework that we went into for this vision. But an urban renewal plan is one way of taking that vision, identifying a specific subset of projects that are necessary to achieve that vision, and tying them to the financing tool that allows you to pay for those projects. Land use and transportation plans, they are what they sound like. So when you're looking at a vision, those two factors, land use and transportation, tend to be some of the key pieces. Identifying how and if you're going to change your street network, what improvements in public transit you want to see in an area, and then how zoning and land uses are anticipated to change within the area. And because those elements of the plan are so important, those elements of the vision are so important, oftentimes communities will adopt entire plans dedicated to those specific attributes to spell them out in greater detail. Comprehensive plan amendment, it's possible that your vision is so dramatically different from what has previously been described in the area that it's no longer in conformance with your comprehensive plan. And since that is the overarching planning document for the community, you may need to amend that comprehensive plan in order to make sure that it's consistent with the new vision. Zoning code amendment, this can really range in price from virtually nothing to fairly expensive, just depending on how dramatic the changes that you want to see in the area are and how well the existing zoning code allows for that type of development to occur. So some of the places where we've seen this be a more costly issue is when we're switching from traditional form of zoning to form-based or design-based code. And then I just included at the end these other administrative actions. Oftentimes, when you come out of a vision, there might be things that you need to do to implement that vision that don't fit nicely and neatly into a specific box. And so there may be just one-off things that need to be done administratively to achieve those elements of the vision. And with that, I thank you for bearing with me as we ran through those two dozen different potential tasks that you might consider for a vision. And now we want to turn it over to you all to sort of discuss and ask us any questions you have and sort of let us know what elements of these visioning components do you think are most valuable to the city of Tewallatin as you try to come up with a vision for what we've called urban renewal area two?
Thank you, Nick. That was kind of overwhelming. Questions? I think we're all like, wow, our heads are like, whoop. Councilor Pratt and then Councilor Soffin.
I guess my question is, a lot of this area we're looking at is privately owned, and at what point do you get the landowners, developers involved in the process?
That's a great question. And one, I think, overarching question to help you hone in on which tasks you think you want to lean into for coming up with a vision here is sort of thinking about which audience do you think should be the emphasis here? And so some of the common audiences that you'd want to involve on a visioning project like this would be the community at large, maybe specific segments of the community that have historically been left out of planning processes. And then the private landowners of the area today is another separate audience. And then potential private developers that are active in the whole region that may not have ever done anything in the city of Tewallatin. What are the type of developers you'd like to see do things in the city of Tewallatin? And so all of those people have a different perspective on the area. All of them have something valuable to add as the city is trying to come up with a vision here. And I think it is a fundamental question to say... And I think it is a fundamental question to say, you know, how important is it for us to be engaging the property owners here versus the general public versus a set of private developers that we'd like to see implement a vision down the road? And trying to weigh the different pros and cons of each of those groups is an important question.
Sacco?
Thank you. And I guess just to add on to what you were just saying, I think all those groups of people are going to be important with this particular process, because it does involve the landowners, our community who's going to see and use this area, the business owners. So I just want to, I don't have any questions, but I just kind of wanted to comment on the items we went through and sort of what stood out to me. So in this section, what do we want? The items that I thought that was gravitated towards that I think would be really beneficial for this area would be open houses, surveys, community events, focus groups, and guiding principles. I think that guiding principle one, I actually made a note guiding principle before it came up on a slide, because with this area, one of the things that comes to mind when thinking about this area is to connect it, because the area to me feels really disjointed. Something that's going to be a huge factor to make sure that sort of we have this guiding principle that leads us in everything that we do, to make sure that the area feels more connected. At least that is my vision. And then some of the things that didn't feel as necessary for this particular project would maybe be a market study or the walking tours, as you said, you know, we're pretty familiar with the area. But also, I guess it depends on who all we bring in for things like focus groups, and if they do need to see that some of those areas that maybe aren't as visible from main roads, such as like the Hind Dutch Brothers, where you're not seeing that unless you're going back there. So walking tours maybe, kind of depending on who we bring in. But those are my comments on the areas that we covered. Thank you.
Councilor Brooks?
Thanks for the presentation, and yeah, learning a lot. I just want to piggyback on what Councilor Sacco and Councilor Pratt said. As far as, because this is a huge list of terms, and it seems as though we would use these tools in different times strategically. Overarching vision, I think, is a really important start, and along with increased connectivity, increased livability. We just have a lot of sit-still traffic, a lot of trouble with access, and then places that are easier and more difficult to access. And I'm sure for the owners too, market and succeed at. So thinking of those things and involving all those groups in those visions and what they want to see is really important for me to learn about. The commercial entities, the community entities, the people that have not been at the table regularly historically. And then as far as some of the visualization and the marketing, to me, that seems like it might be a very good idea further down the road, depending on how aggressively we need to provide information to attract the kind of development that we're looking for, depending on what's decided. And I think then, a more sophisticated and visual approach might be something that could benefit us greatly. But I think that we need to be further down the road with it and be mindful about how we use those tools, because they're expensive. But they also have great impact. So to-do market studies right now, in the middle of COVID, it's like doing an appraisal right now in the middle of a bubble. It's not the favorite thing to do right now. So I think the timing thing and the visioning thing, I'm sure that you're thinking along the same lines that, and I want to hear what you think, as far as the timeline and then how we would use some of these more specific, punchier, and more expensive tools to increase awareness and excitement in our region here, which sometimes I think we have a hard time getting a profile. I'm just curious if you guys, if you're thinking along those lines too of...
Who's you?
Oh, Nick.
I would say that I didn't come into this with a preconceived notion of what the right list of tasks would be for your community. My overarching emphasis, though, is to try to be as cost-effective as possible. I mean, I'm the public finance consultant, so I come into a lot of things thinking about, how can we be cost-effective as we pursue this? And so what I, you know, I've heard from a few of the councilors so far tonight, the emphasis on things like open house, surveys, focus groups, to come up with guiding principles, those do tend to be some of the more cost-effective methods here. They also are things that group easily under the banner of a public involvement specialist, and not under the banner of hiring architects to lead the project, or hiring economists to lead the project, for example. And so I think if we start to go into it with an idea that this is truly a public involvement process, and it's going to be relatively cost-effective, that will lead us to a scope of work that looks different than, all right, we're hiring an architecture firm to come up with a concept plan for an area. It's going to be very design-based and very visual, and they're going to sink, you know, hundreds of hours of design professionals' time into coming up with specific drawings and pro formas for something that might not be ready to develop at this point in time. So I definitely can understand the logic of the approach that I've heard articulated by councilors tonight.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Nick, could you expand on how that public involvement process can actually extend at a later date into a more complex process with like architectural design and design shots and all that stuff? So it's not limited, but that public involvement engagement plan can actually provide a very good foundation for what council intends to do in five years.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I could see, for example, focusing on this public involvement phase now to articulate the guiding principles so that there are really clear, you know, aspirational ideas of what we expect out of this area. What is this area going to mean to the broader city? And once you have that as the linchpin of your vision, again, it's a more verbal vision than it is visual. I would say the next piece would be identifying, what are some of the specific improvements that would need to happen? Talking about street improvements or other utility improvements in the area that would allow that vision to take place. And that gets us into an urban renewal plan, where you can identify those specific projects to be funded with urban renewal. And at the same time, that urban renewal plan can pay for the next round of more in-depth visioning. And so when you are several years in, your urban renewal area has started generating revenue, now might be a good time to do a market study, to go out and really bring in the private developers and show them, hey, this area is ready to develop. And to work with the architects to say, this is the type of project that we want to see here. So I definitely think it can be a phased approach, and that some of those more artistic and marketing things absolutely could come a few years down the road once you've already established a funding tool to take care of the major infrastructure needs in the area that will suppose, that are intended to help achieve the vision articulated in your guiding principles.
That's really helpful. And I guess I have one more thing as far as, I do think that some of the issues that we have that Councilor Sacco brought up as well, these connectivity issues, design, looking at it from a design perspective, some of the troubling areas may be well worth an investment. And I don't know exactly where that goes in, but I do think, not architect-heavy, but at least conceptual design around some of these really big problem areas, where we have sticky traffic situations, disconnected and disjointed things. That coming in early could save us money in the long run, in my opinion. And since there's so much untapped revenue from the earlier reports, it's something to me that's worth considering investing in at some point. Thanks.
Other questions? Councilor Reyes?
I think this is a question for staff. How many properties are we talking about or sections that... I remember you giving us a presentation, but right now I can't remember off the top of my head, how many, you showed us different locations around the city.
So in our briefings, we did five areas. But this process would extend to the whole area. Those five areas were just to kind of give you an idea of what we're facing in the broader area.
And this is the area 2, right?
Yes.
Can you show me the map again? I'm just curious to see the map, if you can.
I think I can share my screen and pull that up here. Let me just flip backwards 100 slides, and we will see it. Here we go.
I think it's slide 5.
Did that show up here?
Yeah, I see it. So that would be by Bridgeport area, and then down in the southern. It's kind of like along the high 5, so... Yeah, thank you. I was just, I wanted to see, basically, because if we're talking about different, if we're starting with this or working on something already, I wanted to see, you know, because I think some of the councilors brought up, you know, transportation or mobility, because if you're in that area where there's more congestion, then definitely that's going to take a little bit of a different approach versus areas where there are more homes and residential, and maybe a couple of businesses here and there. I think, I like what Councilor Sacco was saying about, I think the focus groups, the community, it's very community-based, and if I remember correctly from doing all the other plans. Thank you very much for showing that again. People were very enthusiastic with involving, getting their voice out. And even though we didn't really do everything, like with the parks and transportation bond, even though we didn't do everything there that we wanted to on our wish list, we compromised a little bit. But sort of seeing that section helps me understand what kind of people we should get involved, and, you know, whether there are a little bit more businesses in the downtown area and Bridgeport area. So I think that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking about the people that are, that would use that area the most. So I can, maybe not like the... Maybe later we'll do more of the residents, but mostly like I can see a lot of businesses involved, a lot of in these focus groups. I'm just thinking that out loud of what kind of voices for specifically those areas will be very important for us to hear. Well, thank you for showing that. Thank you, Jonathan. That's just my comment. Sorry, I was looking, my phone is tiny, so couldn't read the speech.
Councilor Pratt?
If I'm hearing you right, Nick, we could start with these, the things Councilor Sacco said, that could maybe that evolve down the road into maybe not drawings, just specific buildings, but kind of general designs of connectivity and other things that have been mentioned after these are done down the line?
Yeah, I've heard many of you mention connectivity and mobility. And we said sort of earlier in this presentation how transportation and land use tend to be two of the key components of a vision for an area. And so I could certainly see, you know, working with a public involvement firm to capture the vision of an area, including the vision of the property owners in the area, and to articulate all of that in guiding principles. But one other piece that could happen at that pretty early stage would be to come up with a transportation plan for the area. And to say, look, these are the biggest trouble spots that we have. There's not an obvious improvement that we've already identified. So let's figure out what the ideal solution would be here. That's helpful to get figured out early, because those specific projects you come up with, even if they're only conceptual designs, and even if they only have very high-level cost estimates, that still gives you enough to be able to identify a project that goes into the urban renewal plan as something you'd like to see funded long-term. So I could certainly see that. And then you've got sort of a public involvement component and a transportation planning component of this visioning project.
Other questions? Councilor Hillier?
Thank you. I've learned so much tonight and still have so much to learn. And I guess I'm wondering, each of the areas are somewhat unique. And so what happens in the process if the stakeholders that are engaged in the first parts of the processes from the two different parts have different visions? And how does that help? Or, I mean, it could enhance connectivity because there's a transition, or how does that process work, please? And what have you seen in the past for some real pluses in that?
Yeah, so I think fortunately, you would be working with a public involvement professional on those components, and not just myself on it. But it's, I think, really helps to not go in with any preconceived notions that we're going to have one unified vision necessarily. And your guiding principles could have one overarching set of guiding principles. You know, mobility could be important to every sub-area within Study Area 2. But maybe the, you know, northern portion here winds up having elements of their guiding principles that look a little different from portions in the south. And that's fine, you know? I think you want to have the flexibility to respond to what the public says. And if you're working with the public and they articulate two separate visions for portions of this area, but that they can still be joined together under a banner of some broader guiding principles, I think you just want to be prepared to capture what the community says and to show how these areas can function together while also maybe having some unique identities. I don't think that I've heard from staff and the city council that there is a mandate to force these areas on this line on the map to all feel exactly unified, but that we just want to capture the community's vision here and recognize it may be a little different for different parts of the area.
Other questions? All right, I got a few, Nick. Dumb-telling on that, a last question. So would we study the whole area? Because it seems like there are three distinct areas in my mind. And I know that based on discussions, there's different levels of priority of the different areas. So why would you study the whole area and spend that money on a whole Area 2 study where the priority might be one section of it? And not just focus on that section that you're really interested in and going after first?
So I think that there can be economies of scale. You know, if all of these areas are important long-term to the community, that you do want to make sure that there's proper mobility here and that there's a shared vision of the ultimate land use pattern you'd like to see. And that we want to make sure that we've identified the public improvements necessary to make those happen, even if some of them happen to be in an area we want to see in the future. Even if some of them happen to be in an area we want to see invested in in the next 10 years and others we think we might not have resources for 20, 30 years down the road. It would still be more efficient to go out to the community and create a vision for the three sub areas now as opposed to doing a whole visioning, guiding principles and transportation plan for one sub area. And then 10 years down the road, doing it for another sub area. And 10 years after that, doing it for the third sub area. It also engages a broader swath of the community. So folks that might not otherwise participate in a conversation on sub area one because they own property in sub area two, they can all be at the table and you can benefit from their experience and their point of view as you work to come up with a shared vision. Even if that shared vision winds up being fractured and having some slightly different elements for those different sub areas. If the areas are too fractured and they really are very different sets of people or they're polar opposites in terms of the community. What they want to see happen in one is the exact opposite of what they want to see happen in another. You wind up having maybe more trouble than it's worth. And those economies of scale no longer matter because you've made every conversation so complicated. Because if you ask about density, the answer is yes in one half and no in the other half. And, you know, things just wind up constantly being a battle. But if there's enough similarity between the areas and they are geographically connected like they are here, certainly there can be economies of scale to addressing all of them at once.
My concern, I mean, what you're saying is making sense, the economies of scale. But it goes back to the point you made about talking to developers, developing a plan. And it sits on a shelf for five years. You come back, it's no good anymore. That you do a study of an area of a sub area and it sits for 15 years. You come back and the vision and the goals 15 years later aren't even close. They don't going to line up anymore.
Yeah, so I would say when it comes to urban renewal, urban renewal is designed to be a 20, 30 year financing source. It starts off slow and builds up over time. And so I'd say that's still in the general timeline that corresponds with an urban renewal plan. That being said, it may be that when you look at the resources available for the urban renewal area and a list of projects here, that maybe one of these sub areas, you know, just really doesn't fit. And that, you know, it is more than one urban renewal area can handle in a 20 to 30 year timeframe. And if that were the case, then I think you're right. You know, if something is really in the distant future, we're not going to be having the capacity to tackle it in the urban renewal plan, then you might simplify things by cutting off an area at the start.
And my second question is, at what point, where's the cart and where's the horse? As far as doing your initial analyses and studies versus going out and doing a grand vision plan? Because I've seen, you know, grand vision plans be developed and they're put in the books and they look great. And when you get to a point where you do analysis of your market study and the landowners are like, no, we're not willing to sell. I mean, it's nice you got this vision, but tough noogies. I ain't selling no matter how much money you try to give me from your tax increment financing. So what point do you do this market study and analysis to find out? Even if you have willing sellers of property owners? Because I'd hate to do a vision plan and it just goes nowhere because the property owners are like, I'm sitting on those.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think fortunately the tasks that I've been hearing support for from the councillors tonight, I think avoid getting the cart before the horse. You know, if we're talking, one, if we're capturing public feedback, that public feedback is valuable in its own right. Whether or not the things the public wants to see happen are financially feasible and consistent with a private property owner's vision for their particular site. The second piece is that they tend to, that type of feedback tends to be pretty general. And it's not going to be targeted too much to any one individual property. The guiding principles that come out of it should still be pretty applicable even if one property owner has specific thoughts on what they want to see happen on their site. It's probably likely that you can find something that a property owner would be willing to do with their land that's consistent with the guiding principles the community came up with. Especially if there's an effort made to include those property owners in the initial visioning effort to begin with. I do think that where you can run into trouble is if this plan were trying to come up with that design charrette sort of approach where you're drawing, you know, high rise towers on one particular property. Because we had architects here and they needed to draw something and they're trying to get it done in two days' time. And they didn't have a chance to talk to that specific property owner. And then the community can get all excited about those, the look of that tower. And they, now they're fixated on it and they want that to happen. And you haven't done a market study yet and you haven't talked to the property owners. So I definitely think if we were getting into something that looked like opportunity site analysis and if you looked at a lot of the design work, that certainly would need to be backed by a market feasibility study and outreach to the specific property owners. I often would recommend that you don't do any opportunity site analysis until you've actually talked to the owner of that site and they have agreed that they would like to be included in that type of study. Because you start drawing plans on a site you don't own and showing it to the public and it can definitely go sideways.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Nick or Jonathan? Council President Grimes?
Hi, thank you. I concur with what the mayor was saying in that, in the emperor and head portion of Area Two's maps. There do seem to be a couple of pieces included in this that might be a lot more difficult to concept plan and come up with a theory for. Because in, in a way, they're sort of already their highest and best use of the property or they're maybe newly constructed and there won't be any opportunities for large scale reinvestment or redevelopment in the very near future. Some of that far east property from High Five over there. And like mayor saying, you know, the idea of sort of putting energy and money and into sort of theorizing and conceptualizing some of that area might be a little more difficult and have a much longer 30 plus year window than some of these other areas might have. So I have some concerns with that. And I second what the mayor was saying. And then also I'm wondering, I mean, now that the discussion is out there and the map is out there for people in the community and our business community to see, are we directing specific questions or inquiries from the community or business people that are seeing this and considering themselves in a possible urban renewal district? If they have questions or concerns or process questions, do we, have we talked to? I see Jonathan nodding, which is always good. Have we talked to like the Chamber of Commerce or some of the business leaders or property owners in these areas? So they have a sense of kind of what's going on? So they don't just see a map highlighted and think that we're about to redevelop them or rezone them?
Yeah, so we have actually met with the chamber and also the CCIO. And just to say heads up, you know, this is a discussion. This is why we're calling it a proposed study area. So we're not, we've tried to get away from claiming them as districts because we don't want to give the assumption that this is a final product that the city intends to do. So we've kind of moved back a little bit because we didn't want to get any kind of confusion out there in the community. But yes, we have reached out to several organizations. We've also reached out a couple of real estate agents just to kind of, hey, what are you looking at? What are you, what are you hearing? Council's looking at helping provide our community with needs and we're looking at a whole host of options. And so, but we also have a website on our twalton.gov that just outlines our process from the education series all the way up until now. And so people understand that this is a long process. And, but yes.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Because, you know, once these get out, it opens up usually a host of questions. So I appreciate that, Jonathan. Thanks for thinking ahead on that.
One additional point I could raise on the boundary issue. The map of the boundary that we've been looking at was a map that was drawn for the purposes of calculating potential urban renewal tax revenue. That does not need to be the boundary that is drawn for the visioning. And so certainly a subset of this area could be the focus of a visioning project if there are certain portions of it that we don't think fit and don't share, don't have the same vision. And that we're not looking for a whole lot of public input on at this point in time. So the visioning area can be smaller and different from what you might ultimately wind up drawing the line around for an urban renewal plan.
Okay, I have a question then, if that's all right. Because I didn't know this fact. So you can actually create his own district, whatever you want to call it. But you don't have to have a plan for or redevelop, have a process of redevelopment vision for every single thing within the district?
Right, so your urban renewal plan, when it gets adopted, will need to articulate its own goals and objectives. That's a requirement for the plan. And it has to be consistent with your adopted comprehensive plan. But it doesn't have to have a detailed community vision that covers every square foot of the area. And oftentimes they don't. But any visioning work that has been done that does apply to the area is certainly important to include as sort of a foundation of the plan. But we see all the time where a community might have a downtown vision. Their urban renewal area includes downtown and adjacent properties. Those adjacent properties may never have had any visioning work done for them. But they could all be united under one urban renewal plan that has one list of goals and objectives and that jointly pool the money from tax increment finance revenue to fund projects that help different parts of that urban renewal area.
And there's no negative impact to businesses that get roped, businesses or land or what have you that gets roped into being in a district without a company plan? There's no negative implications against them?
Correct. The urban renewal, the way that it works is tax increment financing. It's not an additional tax on any of the property inside of the area. It works through foregone revenue of the other overlapping taxing districts. So for an individual business, being inside of the plan can really only be a good thing because it makes it eligible for your property to receive funding from the urban renewal project. So if there are transportation improvements that need to be made or if one project in the plan is facade improvements or tenant improvements to attract new, you know, businesses to the community, those sorts of expenditures can only happen if you're inside the plan. And meanwhile, your taxes are just the same whether you're in or outside of the plan.
All right, thank you. That was one aspect of this that I had never even considered. So thank you for that.
Other questions? All right. What else do you need, Jonathan and Nick?
Jonathan, I think you're on mute still.
So what we'll do is I'll touch base with Nick this week and then I'll touch base with Sherilyn and Don just to kind of gather our thoughts and feedback of what we see and then start kind of brainstorming what council is looking for tonight and then plan on bringing back some sort of next step at the end of May.
Exactly. Like you were saying, Nick, I know we don't want to get too far ahead, but the biggest way to get people very excited is to show them drawings. In the past, people get really jazzed and even high level concept, you know, this could what, you know, this is what this area could look like one day. Gets people jazzed and very involved and committed to the process. So you gotta, you gotta walk that line of, don't design something where the property owner might not be accommodating, but want to have a vision. Because people are visual and if they see something that looks really cool and they can have impact on it and have comments and maybe tweak it a bit, it gets them way more involved in some words on a page.
Yep, 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 yep.
All right. Council President Grimes?
Thank you. Just one more little thing. And then conversely, the flip side of Frank's coin is the unexpected consequence that can happen? Well, because you know, one of the pieces that isn't highlighted is a giant piece that is between the hospital and a giant neighborhood where there was a redevelopment discussion in the hospital years ago that caused quite a kerfuffle. So that is a good idea to be very thoughtful and careful about what we put out there because, yeah, it can get people fired up in all kinds of great good ways. Thank you, Frank. I know you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for Jonathan and Nick? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to item number three is our council meeting agenda review communications and roundtable. Tonight, the pledge, I believe, is on position four, which is councillor Hillier. So you'll lead the pledge tonight. And then proclamation, we have a proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week. Who would like to do that? Councillor Hillier, your hand was up first. You do a double podium there.
That'd be two times in a row, councillor Grimes. Go for it.
All right, so you want to do, okay, councillor President Grimes will do the proclamation. And then, let me look here, I think that's it. Councillor Sacco is doing the statement condemning anti Asian racism. And then any questions on the items on consent? Councillor Brooks?
You just, you didn't mention the moment of silence.
You always do it.
Okay. I was just making sure that we're still doing it. Thanks.
All right. And then the consent agenda, any questions or concerns about the items on the consent agenda? Go ahead, councillor Hillier.
Is now the time to have one removed or wait till the formal meeting?
You just give, you give me a heads up now and they can do it during the meeting.
I'm giving you a heads up.
All right, which one do you want to have removed?
Item number three.
All right. And then I think that's it. So with that, we'll start our council roundtable. And first person in my picture slides here is councillor Hillier.
Thank you. It's nice to see you all. I really don't have anything really to report. I'm going to get to meet with, I think the gentleman's name is Thaddeus from the map so that I can understand that whole process a little better. So we're going back and forth on dates. I've had the opportunity to partner with the police department and be at the prescription drug take back day. And so just a reminder to community members, golly, if you missed it, not a problem. Head to the police department from eight to five, Monday through Friday, and drop off, it could be prescriptions, it could be vitamins, it could be all sorts of stuff. So drop it off and get it out of your cabinets and cupboards in your spring cleaning.
All right, thank you. Councillor Sacco?
Thank you. So I just have a couple of things. The first thing, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware, everybody might be aware. But the Diversity Task Force changed their name to the Tuvalu Latinos. So it's kind of a play on Tuvalu, which I thought was very creative. So no longer they're referred to as the Diversity Task Force. They feel that name represents their group more appropriately. So I thought that was a great change. And then the other thing that I had is on Saturday, I attended the Tuvalu Sustainability Network trash pickup at the Tuvalu Community Park. And others were there too and they might want to speak to it. But I just wanted to add, there was lots of volunteers that came out in the rain and worked together and it was really great to see all those community members work together to pick up trash along Boons Ferry and Martinozzi. And we found some interesting things. But it was just fun to get out there and talk to like minded community members. It was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Councillor Brooks?
Thank you, and I...
And I, I'm just going to go in chronological order on the 16th. I wanted to thank Councilor Sacco for arranging a visit to a resident property to look at. I've seen the Basalt Creek Canyon from one viewpoint, vantage point, but have not seen it from this vantage point of how much wetlands there are as they spread out and the canyon opens up. So I wanted to thank the resident and the, and Councilor Sacco for arranging it and for all of us that took the time to go out there and understand this property, this habitat better. On the 19th, I attended National League of Cities Infrastructure Seminar, which was really helpful in understanding the infrastructure package that's being promoted through the National League of Cities as the next part of President Biden's plans for recovery. And then also, I just want to thank Don Hudson and Sherilyn Lombo for their leadership in the first budget meeting for the council overview meeting. It was helpful to understand and also just I'm very grateful that we are, even with COVID, even with the ice storms and the rest that we faced this year, that we're still in the black and able to move forward with ideas like we heard tonight in the work session. And I have a lot of gratitude for that. On the 20th, I met with the Tualton Arts Advisory Council. We're looking at final projects for the year. There's just been such a great effort this year. And I've said it many times, with the psyche grant work, the mural, the traffic box wraps, and kicking it all off with that partnership with the Tualton River Keepers and the Stormdrain Murals. We also, I just wanted to bring up, looked at, we do community grants for arts agencies and they've been at the same level for the last 12 years, $1,000. So during the budget committee meeting, I planned to bring up to raise it to 2,000. And if anyone wants to talk to me further about that, please let me know and reach out to me, email me if you have any more questions. On the 22nd, it was Earth Day and I also attended the First Tier Suburbs Council for the National League of Cities. And we talked about renaming that since first tier is a little bit of an antiquated term. And I also attended a paddle volunteer thing for the Tualton River Keepers training and just really want to acknowledge our partnership with them and the fact that they do such great work in our area. And then I want to thank Councilor Sacco for mentioning the Tualton Sustainability Network. Some people know, I haven't really brought it up in council because I've felt a little shy about it. But at the same time, I want to be welcoming to people. It's a new environmental net sustainability network for people who work, live, and play in Tualton. And of course, you are all invited to participate with us. We did a wonderful kickoff trash pickup event. We're doing a hug a park event in collaboration with City Parks on May 22nd. And we kicked the whole thing off with a virtual seminar, which will be available on our website with Dr. Matt McIntyre, who discovered us. It's quite a story and every single person, it was a small gathering, but every single person that attended either texted me, called me, or emailed me about what a great seminar it was about the discovery process of chemicals going in through stormwater runoff. So since we talk about that here, it just might be something of interest to fellow counselors and community members and city staff. And a big thanks to everybody that came out and that's all I've got, thanks.
Council Pratt.
On last week on Wednesday, I went to the core area or attended, on Zoom I went, to the core area parking district. And we've been talking about, for the blue lot, we need new poles. And our consensus was that we'd rather have PGE on them just because the technology is updating so quickly. But I think Clay is coming the second meeting in May to speak to council. And then Friday, last Friday, I attended the League of Oregon Cities statewide conference call. And I'm trying to read here, I forgot glasses. But you know, the big thing is that there are several counties, including our Clackamas County, that are on the verge of going back to extreme risk for COVID. It's just a matter of if there's more hospital cases. But that would mean the restaurants and other businesses closing. So I just hope everybody, we're getting there, but let's just be careful so that doesn't have to happen again. The other thing was on the American Rescue Plan Funds, they were very much encouraging all the cities to think of long-term use of those funds. And then Saturday, I did Meals on Meals swap that helps our community. And I have to say, all the events I've been to, that was the best swag bag of goodies that I've gotten in a long time, if anybody wants to do it in the future. And I also helped pick up trash with the Sustainability Network, which is interesting. And the thing I really was really grateful about with that was there were a lot of very young people that are interested in that group. That's it.
Council Rance.
Thank you, Mayor. I've really been in town much this week. And then Councilor Sacco talked about Tualton, I mean, the Diversity Task Force, this ancient entity. I'm going to give a presentation on the next meeting. So if you want to jump, that's fine. Not then, it's okay. It's going to be in Spanish. The, I actually have a, I have been working with this nonprofit, not working like a job, but being in conversations with them about it. They're based out of Portland, they're called Oregon Harbor Folk. And it's, it's a nonprofit that was founded by Homer Williams and basically is to end homelessness. And they have these, they have several ways of how they end homelessness, meaning, you know, it's extreme sometimes. That's the way some stuff we use in nonprofit. When you say end hunger or end homelessness, you really don't, you just strive for that. But anyway, he's been creating different ways of how to reach out to the unshelter. So whether they are extreme homeless or critical homeless community, he's building this different, the organization's building these like tents that are very durable. So working with that community, but they're also working with the senior community and they are trying to match up people. They have this, or this program that's called Share, HomeShare. So basically, it's sort of like a, like, and I'm terrible explaining this. And they can do a way better job, and that's what the reason is why I bring it up. But they, they are presenting this at different city councils. And the idea, and they got, they got all the support of all these on the state level and also on the city levels and county. But basically, the idea is to promote, it's like a match on the, on the apps. And so the, the way they do it is if you're a person who has extra rooms and you sign up for that, and then they'll match you up with someone that is similar to your request. So for instance, you, you're okay if they have a dog, you're okay if they have cats, or maybe no cats, no dogs, or however you want to like set up your profile. And then they'll match you with someone that's looking for a home in the area that they're, that you are. So and then they sort of work on that. And I, and I like the idea, they've been talking about it for a while. But I think you're going to see more and hear more about it more and more. So they, it kind of stopped last year because of COVID, obviously. But they're going to start talking about it more to the city council. So my request to the council, and most of you know, I hardly ever do this, but to 100%, there are different ways of housing the community. And so it would be great because the way they're looking for people to sign up. So they want to promote or they want to get the word out that there's maybe another single female with another single female that can come into a home together and live and help one another. So basically, that's the, the idea. Or like a young, say like a student that it's, you know, wants to partner with, be a companion or be part of this, this, this match of housing, though, you know, you rent from a person that has an extra room or an extra place to keep someone or take someone. So I, my guess, my request is if three of you or four of you can join me and have them present at one of our city councils, give them like 15, 20 minutes and they can talk about it and let the community know that there are these programs. And if they're on the verge of losing their home or on the, or they're looking for a home, maybe this could be a good way of housing people. So what are your thoughts? It's called HomeShare Oregon. So Google it or go to homeshareoregan.org and you'll find a little bit more information about it.
I'm fine with it, but not 15 minutes. Presentations are limited, usually to five to 10 minutes.
Well, I, I'm hoping that they present sort of like the minute percent or like, I don't know. Whatever it is time that we give them, I just want to make sure that they don't get, I mean, because I could call them to come and give three-minute presentation on the public comment. But I felt like there's more, more content to it that I feel three minutes is to give a nonprofit leader to come and talk about it is not enough. I mean, I'm a nonprofit leader, so I understand.
Usually we allow people 10 minutes for presentations max. Then we just have them work with Sherilyn to get it scheduled, you know, sometime in the future. I'm fine with it and I assume we're all capable of hearing what that says. So they just need to work with Sherilyn to get on the council's schedule sometime in the future.
Okay, I'll do it. I just, I don't want to give them three minutes.
No, we'll just, we'll have them in the presentation, kind of like we had last week or two weeks ago from the Hamlet folks who had about 10 minutes.
Yeah, sort of like that, that's what I was hoping, something like that.
Or like the Borland Free Clinic that's on tonight, something like that.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, so.
All right, Council Rance, if you'll just give me their information, I'm happy to work with them.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Council President Grant.
Thank you. To Council Rance's point, the HomeShare Oregon is just about to launch a huge public information campaign now that they've got the website, basically, you know, 99.9% ready to launch. So that whole big project pretty soon, like within days probably, is going to get a giant information campaign. So by the time they come to speak to us, hopefully, it'll have been on lots of television news and newspaper and people will start to get a little bit of awareness about it so that when we start talking about it, we won't be starting from zero. So that, that's coming soon. And then really, I only have, just, I want to remind people that this Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:00, the Tualton Chamber of Commerce is doing an online celebration and awards meeting. And two of Tualton's finest, Mayor Hovinick and also former counselor Robert Kello, are going to be award recipients. So if people would like to.
candidates, candidates, we're not award recipients.
So if people would like to join remotely and cheer on our, our council people and former council people, that would be great. And then I'm sure the mayor's going to cover it, but we have the State of the City address coming up also for people who join virtually and get caught up with what's been going on. So that's all for me, but I do, would love to invite the HomeShare Oregon people to come also for 10-minute presentations. So, thanks, guys.
All right, I just got a handful of things. On the 14th, I attended the League of Oregon Cities Roundtable where staff and mayors got together and chatted about the legislative process, how it's going so far, what bills were alive and were dead, what would have, you know, big impacts, potentially negative impacts to cities. So we discussed that. On the 19th, Greater Portland Inc., Small Cities in Corsham, had a special meeting where President and CEO Monique Claiborne presented her new work plan and her strategy for GPI going forward. She wanted the input of, you know, the municipalities were part of GPI on her work plan. So she went through her whole slide presentation and got lots of feedback and then made those adjustments and presented them on the 22nd to the full board of Greater Portland Inc. Where in addition to her new work plan and strategy, the SEDs, remember, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the region, were discussed and the board unanimously approved Monique's work plan for GPI to move it forward to be a little bit different than it's been in the past, be more aggressive in attracting businesses to the Portland metro area. So I look forward to her work. She's pretty enthusiastic, she has great vision, she has a terrific plan. And now we'll be helping her make that happen and attract really good jobs to the region. And then finally, the mayor called, the mayor, she's sorry. The governor called the emergency meeting of mayors yesterday afternoon to discuss COVID. And I'll just hold off on what she told the mayors after Council Brooks's COVID minute to let you know what the discussion was. It was proved very well-attended and lots of Q and A, some tough questions. But Governor and her staff didn't duck any questions. So I'm pretty impressed that they did that. And how many mayors did drop everything on a Sunday afternoon to speak with the governor? So that is all I have. Anything else for the good of the order for work session? All right, so we've got about 12 minutes now. We'll see you all back here at seven o'clock.